This hearing of the Subcommittee on Biotechnology Horticulture and Research, on opportunities and challenges in direct marketing, a view from the field will come to order. Really appreciate the witnesses being here today. We will go ahead and offer our opening statements and move into your testimony. So, good morning and welcome. Today, we'll hear from producers involved in direct marketing ventures such as local farmers markets, direct to restaurant or grocery store sales, value-added sales and community-supported agriculture. Entrepreneurial efforts of individual producers certainly drive success in direct marketing ventures. Nevertheless, as producers seek to develop new marketing channels for their products, it is important for the Subcommittee to get their perspective on the opportunities they see, the challenges they encounter, and what programs can help facilitate further development of these alternative marketing channels. As many of you are aware, the Ag Committee has engaged in considerable oversight and legislative effort regarding issues pertaining to marketing agricultural products. Direct marketing is enjoying a resurgence, driven both by economic considerations as well as a desire among consumers for better relationships with those involved in food production. An evaluation of census data comparing 2007 to 2012 figures shows steady increase in producer participation in each type of alternative marketing channels. Clearly, consumer demand is driving market development. What is also clear is that direct marketing creates opportunities not only for agricultural economic development, but can also serve as a primary mechanism for reconnecting producers and consumers. While much of today's discussion will focus on the economic factors that drive participation in direct marketing ventures, I do want to take a moment to comment on how essential the direct connection to our witnesses have with consumers can aid us in bridging the gap between urban and rural constituencies. Facilitation of these business relationships can aid in a larger challenge that the committee has been focusing on related to the perceived disconnect between consumers and food producers. Early on in this Congress, several of us had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Charlie Arnott, who is the CEO of the Center for Food Integrity. Mr. Arnott and his team have done considerable work to better understand consumer expectations regarding transparency in our food systems, and their research responds to consumer demand for factual, easy to understand and relevant information. A central objective throughout his team's research is to evaluate what steps can be taken to build consumer trust and confidence in today's food systems. With the average individual being at least three generations removed from production agriculture, strengthening ties between producers and consumers is a particularly worthy goal as we attempt to enact policies that maintain and enhance food security. According to Mr. Arnott's research, when evaluating whom consumers hold responsible for trust, trust-building and transparency, consumers view farmers second only to food companies in all aspects of food production. Though many opportunities exist to enhance transparency, I think it would be helpful to hear from producers who have familiarity in direct marketing and about their experiences engaging consumers in an open dialogue. Among our witnesses, I'm pleased to welcome one of my constituents, Mr. Andy Heck. Mr. Heck currently works as a farm-to-school educator for Gen H Kids, a not-for-profit based in Springfield, Illinois, that works with schools, community organizations and families to improve the health of children, and a former teacher at the Buffalo Tri-City School District with my former classmate, Mr. Steve Dilly, so I won't hold that against you. Just a few months ago, my district staff had the opportunity to volunteer at one of Gen H Kids' community gardens in Springfield and see firsthand the fresh produce that is provided to the community and donated to local charities. I'm thankful for the good work that Gen H Kids does day in and day out to provide healthy food to families in central Illinois. Prior to joining Gen H Kids' team, Andy not only taught, but farmed full-time for over 10 years, growing a diversity of vegetables and fruits in the Springfield area, marketing produce directly to local restaurants through a community-supported ag program, to local retail outlets and at the old Capital Farmers Market downtown Springfield. Andy was named the Illinois Sustainable Agriculture Farmer of the Year in 2012 by the Illinois Department of Agriculture. I now yield to the Subcommittee ranking member, Ms. Delbene, for her opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for holding this hearing today. And thanks to all of the witnesses for being here today. It's great to have such a diverse group of producers here, including Kurt Tonamaker from my area in Washington State, to talk about this issue. The consumers I talked to are increasingly interested in a food system where sales occur the shortest possible distance from the field to the fork. And they know that food traveling a short distance from farm to plate is more likely to be fresh, and just as important, chefs are discovering that they can do better things with food if their raw materials, the fruits, the vegetables, meats and dairy products are fresh and of higher quality. This trend has opened up new markets for food raised by producers who take pride in not only growing a quality product, but also telling a compelling story. Urban and rural residents are learning that they like to have direct connections to farmers and farm life. They like knowing where their food comes from and knowing that it's grown by producers who take good care of their farmland and their animals. These consumers like knowing that their purchases not only sustains the producer, but also builds their community as well. These consumer preferences are opening up more opportunities for farmers to directly market or sell their products through channels that keep their identity as producers closely connected to their products. I'm biased, and I think so is Congressman Newhouse, my colleague, but I believe in Washington State, we grow some of the best food you can find. In my district, farmers are also incredibly innovative in marketing to a diverse set of customers. One example is the Puget Sound Food Hub. Born with the help of USDA Local Food Promotion and Value Added Producer Grants, as well as assistance from private entities, this is a group of roughly 40 farms and partners operating cooperatively to market and distribute locally-produced food to restaurants, hospitals, preschools, the cafeteria at Amazon and grocery stores, to name a few. Instead of buying costly equipment or having to drive long distances, these farmers have pooled their resources to be more competitive and reach more customers. As a result, sales directly to farmers are growing, and some farms have even been able to hire additional employees. I appreciate the energy and creativity of the producers before us here today. They are, each in their own way, engaged in highly-focused, relationship-oriented marketing. This approach is so needed in agriculture today and many times is absent. But this is also a great example of what the Agriculture Committee does so well. There's no partisan agenda here today. Instead, we're hearing straight from producers about their relationship with consumers, so we're in better informed on how to craft agriculture policy. So, thank you, everyone, for being here today, and with that, I yield back.
Thank you, and I would echo the comments about Washington's products. I find your cherries when in-season at my local stores are much better than the Chilean ones right now. So, thank you. The Chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so the witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure that there's ample time for questions. The Chair would like to remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were present at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in the order of their arrival. I appreciate members' understanding. Witnesses are reminded to limit their oral presentations to five minutes, or you'll get the... from me? And all written statements will be included in the record. I'd like to welcome our witnesses to the table, and I recognize ranking member Ms. Delbene to introduce our first witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce Kurt Tonamaker today. Kurt and his brother Cole are fourth-generation farmers in Washington State. Their great-grandfather moved there in 1903 and started an orchard. Then in 1962, the family expanded the farm into a full-time operation, growing alfalfa, alternating with wheat, clover and corn. Kurt and Cole are co-owners of the family farm. In 1992, they started selling at farmers markets at the same time when they started transitioning the farmland to certified organic. Today, they grow nearly 400 different varieties of organic fruits and vegetables, including cherries, I have to point that out. And they sell throughout Washington at farmers markets, direct-to-restaurants and grocery stores through a CSA, at farm stands and wholesale, as well as tending to their 126-acre farm in central Washington and also a 16-acre farm in western Washington. So, it's a great pleasure to have Mr. Tonamaker here with us today, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Tonamaker, welcome, and you're recognized for your opening testimony.
Well, hello, my name is Kurt Tonamaker, and as she said, I am a fourth-generation farmer from the great state of Washington, where my great-grandparents homesteaded in 1903. For those of us who grow the food that is the foundation of America's prosperity can feel a little out of place today in modern society, so I wanted to thank your committee members for your service to agriculture and therefore the entire American public. We grow hundreds of varieties of tree fruit, vegetables and melons. We started direct marketing in 1984 when it became apparent that indirect marketing through wholesale distribution system was no longer able to offer fair prices. That year, after waiting for 10 months for the final wholesale apple payment, we received a check so small that the hired man joked the paper boy could cash it for us when he came by on his bicycle. In recent years, direct marketing has generated as much as 90% of our income from less than 30% of our tonnage. Said another way, selling 70% of our production wholesale produced only 10% of our income. My family has witnessed the spectacular pace of consolidation of both farmland and markets. My family realized 30 years ago that to have, to market our own product directly or else become extinct, just another pioneer family farm engulfed by another absentee corporate entity. Direct marketing saved our farm. Supporting farms like ours is our generation's opportunity to encourage the small, independent family farms that for generations were the backbone of American prosperity and rural America. Today, our farm provides a living for several families year-round and for many summer employees, mainly students earning money for school. These family farmers, who choose to stay on the land for the love of the land and for the love of contributing something worthwhile, are the people we want to entrust the future of our agricultural resources. On our farm, we truly believe that we are just temporary caregivers of these resources. We do not really own the land, but have borrowed it from our grandchildren. The future status of our food supply and the agricultural resources depends on our actions or our failure to act in our time. Through the remarkable success of the recent revival of direct marketing, the burdens and barriers for direct-market farmers are increasing. Food safety records is an increasing burden for the small farm. Food safety has always been important to us because our business is built on providing safe, fresh food directly to our customers. We know our customers as individuals we care about. These binders, the 2014 food safety records for our farm, will not protect the public from outbreak or protect the farmer from responsibility. Thousands of farms, including ours, have produced safe food for decades without six inches of paperwork yearly. We have lost sight of what really matters in food safety, safe food. If we're serious about safe food, why not educate the public in the same way that Smokey the Bear educated us all about forest fires? While certainly there are obstacles, there are plenty of initiatives currently helping to support direct-market farmers. One of the successful programs was a partnership between the King County Department of Health and the Columbia City Farmers Market. Together, these groups obtained the funds and staff and authorization necessary to redeem SNAP, WIC and Senior WIC nutrition benefits at the market. The partnership attracted a diverse group of new, low-income customers who were excited to be able to access good-tasting, healthy food at the same place as their benefits were able to redeem. I encourage you, policymakers, to support the programs as well as the farm-market promotion program and the specialty crop block grants. In Washington State, agriculture research has been instrumental in the success of our fruit crops and more recently improvements in organic and sustainable production methods. Direct contact with customers profoundly and permanently changed the way we farm and why we farm. If this committee could spend one market Saturday with us, committee members would never again be able to think the same about small, direct-market farms. For us, it has been an incredible experience to interact with the public that is very grateful to have good-tasting, fresh produce at reasonable prices. Our customers are grateful to see the chance to support a family farm and to see multiple generations working together. Possibly the brightest indications of the success of direct marketing is our son and daughter-in-law are working with us on a farm instead of fleeing to the city. Apparently, the fifth generation of Tonamakers farming in Washington believes in the future of direct-marketing farming. of direct-market farming. There is something so American about the whole situation, many independent, self-reliant individuals creating a better life for their families and future generations. Thank you.
Well, let the record show, that was four minutes and fifty-nine seconds. I will not go through the intro of Mr. Heck again, but again, welcome from the great state of Illinois, and especially central Illinois, where we both reside. I appreciate you being here. You’re free to welcome your, you’re free to offer your opening testimony.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the Subcommittee today. I am honored by your invitation and welcome the opportunity to share my experiences as a market farmer, Illinois Stewardship Alliance Board President, and as the garden educator for Generation Healthy Kids. I grew up in the small town of Mechanicsburg, a rural farming community in central Illinois. I attended the Tri-City School District from kindergarten until graduation. I graduated from Southern Illinois University with a Bachelor of Science in Biological Sciences, and received a secondary teaching certificate. I taught high school and junior high biology, chemistry, and physics. During my first summer vacation, I began farming part-time on a small scale to supplement my beginning teacher’s salary. As my knowledge of direct-market farming grew, I realized this could be a viable and fulfilling career, and not just a hobby. The first season’s crops were solely marketed at the farmers’ market. I soon realized that market sales are directly proportional to the weather, and inclement weather equals poor sales. And was at this time, I decided diversifying farm income was the only way to secure steady income as a direct-market farmer. At first, I introduced myself to chefs in the area and started taking them samples of products. This proved advantageous because several chefs began ordering consistently each week. Sales to retail stores came next, followed by the formation of a community-supported agriculture program. In a CSA model, customers prepay in the winter for a weekly share of vegetables during the growing season. This model aids the farmer by creating a flow of income during the winter months when income is traditionally scarce. Diversifying income can increase financial stability, but the reality is a successful operation requires arduous physical labor, and workdays that start at sunrise and easily end after the sun sets. Most direct-market farmers are truly passionate about their livelihood, and sacrifice a steady paycheck with higher wages in exchange for the health benefits associated with growing and consuming fresh, nutrient-dense foods, and the amount of healthy physical activity associated with farming. Last November, I decided to combine my knowledge of farming and gardening, along with my formal education as a science teacher, by joining the staff of Generation Healthy Kids. Gen H Kids is a nonprofit located in Springfield, Illinois. Gen H Kids Eat Real Move More programs teach children and parents the importance of nutrition and physical activity for a healthy life. Our Gen H Kids programs are visible in more than thirty elementary, middle, and high schools throughout Sangamon County. In 2016, we will have over a dozen school and community gardens. The school gardens are used as hands-on tools for nutrition education. Through the gardens, I’ve seen firsthand that when children plant the seeds, water the plants, and hand-pick their own fresh fruits and vegetables, they are actually more likely to eat those fresh and nutritious vegetables. Last season, we saw neighborhood children like Mikey picking and eating whole peppers right off the plant at our community garden in downtown Springfield. It’s now a pretty common occurrence to see Mikey grazing on a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables whenever he is at the community garden. The labor in the garden is shared by many members of the community. Last fall, Congressman Davis’s staff even volunteered during the National Day of Service. Thank you. Our Eat Real at School program is designed to provide nutrition education, skills training, menu planning, and daily menu lesson plans to food service personnel in schools. Gen H Kids aids schools in the transition from a processed, heat-and-serve, fast-food menu to a nutritious, from-scratch menu. Ideally, the next step is to work with schools on procuring fresh, locally-sourced ingredients. However, there are still many barriers to overcome, such as easing regulations on farmers to sell to schools, and creating incentives for farmers to diversify their crops. For schools, minimizing barriers such as the bidding process, increasing school lunch reimbursement rates, and providing incentives to schools that source locally. Through my work as a direct-market farmer, as President of Illinois Stewardship Alliance, and now at Gen H Kids, I’ve seen the demand for increased farm-to-school programs. As a result, I would urge all members of Congress to support the passage of the Child Nutrition Act reauthorization, and time for it to take effect for the new school year this fall, and to support increased funding for the USDA Farm-to-School Grant Program as part of the reauthorization. With increased resources, organizations like Gen H Kids will be able to work with local schools and farmers to increase the procurement of local produce in schools, which will inter, provide increased financial stability for direct-market farmers, and create opportunities for new jobs in the field. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heck. I’d like to now welcome Ms. Coffin to the witness stand, and thank you very much for being here. You’re free to offer your opening testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chris Coffin, and I’m here today wearing three hats. I work for Land for Good, which is a New England-based land-access organization. I also work with Farmed Institution New England, a network of organizations looking to source more local and regional food to New England institutions. And lastly, I am a part-time, beginning farmer who direct-markets pastured chickens and eggs in Massachusetts. New England, not surprisingly, is a leader in direct-market sales. My testimony goes through some of those statistics. A quarter of farms in New England direct-market. I want to talk a little bit about what we see as the benefits and opportunities in direct marketing. Number one, important in our region, direct-market opportunities are fueling the growth in new farms and farmers. Over twenty-five percent of our farmers in the region are beginners and gravitating to commodities that can be easily direct-marketed. Forty-one percent of vegetable farms in the region are managed by beginning farmers, and thirty-nine percent of those farms, beginners are marketing poultry and eggs. Second, direct marketing is really helping to expand healthy food access. You see it in the growth of mobile markets that are specifically serving low-income and senior communities. You see it in the growth in nutrition incentive programs around the region, and a new trend is CSA farms that are financing low-income and elder shares by getting donations from their CSA members and from community organizations. Lastly, the value of direct marketing to consumer education is really important in a region where farms are surrounded by non-farming neighbors. Every direct sale is an opportunity to educate a neighbor and a consumer about farming practices and farming challenges, and it is building support for agriculture. So, looking forward in the region, for us, the demand particularly is in these kind of intermediated markets that are to restaurants and to institutions. The institutional demand and growth has been significant. New England institutions represent a $1 billion annual food buy. UMass has been doing terrific things in increasing its sales of, its purchases of local produce. Colby Sawyer in New Hampshire is purchasing twenty-five percent of its produce locally, and the University of Maine System has announced big plans to do so as well. So, this we see as a continuing growth. When you look at the programs that have been hugely important to this market development in the region, especially crop block grants, value-added producer grants, Farmers Market and Local Food Procurement Program, Federal State Marketing Improvement Program, and like Mr. Heck mentioned, the importance of the Farm-to-School Grant Program, I would say there are also additional opportunities in the Child Nutrition Act to make some tweaks on the geographic preference provision that would help encourage local procurement, and a tweak to the DOD Fresh Program that would do the same. Lastly, let me just take a minute to talk about some of the challenges that we see in the direct-marketing arena, and in fact, this is in sort of farming generally in New England. One is access to land, which is, we are a land-constrained part of the country anyway. But with a third of our farmers looking to retire in the next twenty years, that’s a lot of land that is going to transition, and could transition out of agriculture unless we take steps to offer a secure exit for those farmers and to provide new opportunities for beginning farmers. So, programs in that front that are very important are the Beginning Farmer and Rancher Development Program. We hope that the next Farm Bill will increase funding for that. And the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program that is through the Ag Land Easement Subprogram, Purchasing Development Rights from Farmers. Couple of other, as was mentioned by Mr. Tonamaker, in terms of food safety, the Food Safety Modernization Act will be, a lot of additional requirements for our mid-sized farms, and funding to support training for these farms, and those requirements will be critical. Livestock Slaughter and Processing, biggest issue for us as a beginning poultry farmer, and getting USDA to be more of an advocate in working with some of the small and very small processing plants will be important. And lastly, in terms of climate change and risk management, as we see more extreme weather events bringing greater production risk and new plant and disease issues around warming temperatures, the importance of a whole-farm revenue protection product that works for our region will be important, and continued funding for conservation programs that help improve soil health and reduce risk. So, thank you very much. It was great to have a chance to share my thoughts.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you and my colleague from your home state, Mr. McGovern, on some of those tweaks to, to the Child Nutrition Act, and also looking ahead to the next Farm Bill. Thanks for your comments.
I just hope you appreciate we have agriculture in New England.
I did see the witness list, and I was frankly shocked. But that’s okay. We don’t count grocery stores in Illinois as agriculture. Thank you for being here, and thank you for putting up with our banter back and forth, too. It’s actually a privilege to serve with these members here on the Subcommittee, and I hope you get a chance to see that. Mr. McCloskey, the producer of one of the products that quickly gets into my refrigerator and quickly leaves, because I have two children who are freshmen in high school that like to drink a lot of your Fairlife Milk. So, I’d like to give you the opportunity to open, give your opening statement now.
Thank you, and thank you for having us, and I think this is just a fantastic opportunity for farmers and everyone in the committee and the legislation to be able to have these type of discussions because of the importance of this interface more and more every day. I’d like to share a little bit about my journey. It starts years ago, in the eighties, with my wife and I. I come from a science background, a veterinarian, with a specialty in food animal production. Always have dedicated my career to, to food animal production medicine, and had a practice in Southern California, basically focused on dairy production. In the mid-eighties, my wife and I decided that we’d like to get into our own dairy farming. We started with a very small farm of two hundred cows, and basically applied the principles that I believe belong to every farmer, and we’re hearing it here today as, as we listen to the presenters, and that is the core values of our concern of safety of our product, of very high quality in our product, in our case, where we deal with animals of, of animal care and welfare, and for sure, of environmental care as well, and of the people who work with us, the importance of their well-being together with our community. So, these are the core values that I believe belong to all farmers in this country, and that are very important, that we get an opportunity to share these values with the consumer. As you know, today, ninety-eight percent of the population is isolated from farming, and there’s a lot of things that are set out there that are misconceptions, and unfortunately, they’re being used for competitive reasons and agendas that may be different than what particular farmers may be dedicating their life to. But those core values are there, and those core values were in the initial small farm that my wife and I started with. Because we were successful, and we really focused on what we did, and we started with the core values, we’ve been able to grow the business substantially since that moment. Today, Fair Oaks Farms, which is our home dairy, is in Indiana. It is a operation that, there’s thirty-six thousand milking cows. We are open to the public. We have twenty-eight million people within a two-hundred-mile radius of our farm. We decided that, back in the early two thousands, that it was very important to share with what we do in farming with the community, and we’ve opened our farm to the public. Again, we have about five hundred thousand people visit our farm every year, and they get to see absolutely everything through, through the farms and what we’re doing. It’s been quite attractive to other people in agriculture, so we’ve opened a hog operation with three thousand faring sows, and very well accepted by the, by the community and the visitation. We’re adding now layers, about six hundred thousand with a large company. Indiana is a very productive area in animal agriculture and farming, as you all know. And, and Fair Oaks Farms, we’re hoping is a center to be able to share with the community and the consumer what we’re doing in agriculture. So, I think what’s, what’s most important to me as I sit in a, with, with the other presenters here, is that, is to share with you that all farming is good. Organic is important. Modern farming practices are important. Small is important. Local is important. Large is important. Far away is important. What local and far away is can be defined in many, many ways. We don’t, we can’t grow oranges in, in Indiana, but we can grow them in Florida. And, and we need to define what local and far away is, and what the benefits are. We have a tremendous challenge as farmers. We have to be able to protect this environment. We have to take care of our animals. But at the same time, we have to be productive. We have growing hungry world population, and we got to be able to feed them without cutting down one more tree, while cleaning up every one of our streams, while cutting our emissions dramatically, while caring for our animals, while creating a very safe, high-quality, and affordable-for-all food. And we have to do this in a short matter. We cannot fight against each other in the farming community. We cannot talk bad about each other for marketing purposes. We cannot be saying that the true science that is safe, that is productive, that allows us to be sustainable, is, we cannot continue to, to drive those things down. We must continue to grow as an agriculture community together. It’s going to take every single one of us as farmers in the United States and worldwide to meet the challenge that we have while protecting the environment. We do some great things in large scale at Fair Oaks Farms. We produce one hundred percent of the fuel from manure that, that takes our milk to market. That’s twelve million miles a year that we produce in our digesters, renewable, natural gas that runs forty-two of our trucks to market. We produce our electricity for our farm from that. We capture the nutrients, the nitrogen and phosphorus, to avoid them from being a runoff or, or leaching into our waterways, and manage them as a fertilizer in a more appropriate way. There’s great things happening in agriculture, great technology that is occurring. We have to embrace technology, and, but it has to be safe, science-proven technology. We have to learn how to communicate these concepts to consumers because it’s confusing to them, and we can’t allow ourselves, as agriculture people, to be the people that are confusing the consumer because of competitive issues. We have to embrace all of us together to get to this end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Mr. McMickin, welcome. It was great to meet you. Feel free to give your opening testimony.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is John McMickin. I’m the CEO of the Evergreen Cooperative Corporation, and I also serve as the President of Green City Growers, which is a hydroponic, worker-owned farm in downtown Cleveland, Ohio. I appreciate the opportunity to, to participate here today. I’d like to start with a little bit of a background on Evergreen. Evergreen is a nonprofit organization. We have a wealth-building strategy that we started in 2009. This was started by a group of Cleveland’s major, what we call, anchor institutions. So, this is university hospitals, the Cleveland Clinic, Case Western Reserve University, and the Cleveland Foundation. The city of Cleveland and its mayor have also strongly supported this initiative along the way, and all of our anchors continue to support these businesses as both customers and as board members. Our wealth-building strategy is to start new businesses in downtown Cleveland, which will create living-wage jobs, along with health benefits and special programs like our unique home-buying program. And most importantly, this is an equity-building strategy wherein the profits are shared with our, our employees. Eighty percent of our three companies are owned today by our employees. Along with our greenhouse, which I’ll talk about here in a moment, we have a commercial laundry operation, and a solar and LED lighting operation, which to date have created a hundred and ten jobs. Ninety percent of our employees reside in the city of Cleveland. Eighty-five percent are minority. Nearly forty percent are returning citizens formerly incarcerated for nonviolent offenses. And twenty-one of our employees, our worker owners, have now purchased their own homes in the city of Cleveland, which they will own outright in five years or less. As an overview of our greenhouse, this is a As an overview of our greenhouse, this is a 250,000-square-foot facility with close to three and a half acres of growing area under glass. At the time that we built this in 2012, it was the largest food production facility of its kind in a core urban area. We have the capacity of about 3 million heads of lettuce per year and about 300,000 pounds of herbs. We're situated on a 12-acre brownfield site in Cleveland's central neighborhood. This was the former location of a disinvested neighborhood with about 40 vacant homes, all of which we acquired, demolished, remediated the land and built this greenhouse. Today at the greenhouse, we have 38 full-time employees. We're at about 75% capacity. We grow 10 varieties of leafy greens and a variety of herbs. We have about 25 commercial customers within about a 250-mile radius. So, this is a hydroponic facility. We have horizontal growing pools of purified water, no soil involved, of course. We have about a million gallons of water in our facility that are constantly in motion and constantly being monitored by our computerized growing equipment. Of the water that we need for growing, 85% of it we capture off of our rooftops. We get a lot of rain and snow in northeast Ohio, so we're fortunate to be able to utilize that water. We also use a lot less water to grow our leafy greens. It takes about one gallon of water from seed to harvest, to grow our lettuce, as compared to our field-grown equivalents, which use up to 40 gallons of water per head of lettuce. Operationally, our crops reach our customers within 24 hours of harvest. So, we're providing fresher produce that then has a longer shelf life. Couple notes on food safety. In an indoor-controlled environment, we are able to much more tightly control food safety. This comes at a cost, of course. Indoor growing also enables us to be pesticide-free. We use only ladybugs to combat the bad insects and we use an industry-leading third-party food safety auditor to make sure that we are truly walking the walk. And for two consecutive years, we've had very high scores from our food safety auditors. Couple notes on our customers. We sell primarily to three sectors. We sell to retail grocery store chains. We sell to wholesale distributors who deliver to area restaurants and institutions like the hospitals and the universities. And lastly, we sell to food processors who are using large volumes of our herbs in recipes for pestos and sauces and juices and the like. So, in closing, you know, why are we here to talk about urban hydroponic farming? Our team now sees a clear path toward viability, long-term financial viability, and we assert that every major city in the U.S. should be at least looking at this model. Why? As previously mentioned, we have the ability to maintain high levels of food safety practices. Pesticide-free is huge. The ability to control insect damage without harsh chemical sprays. We have opportunities that we create through the adaptive reuse of land and now potentially buildings. There's no reason why we couldn't construct a facility like this in an old abandoned warehouse with the advancements in LED lighting technologies that enable us to do that. In conclusion, after three years of operation, Evergreen and Green City Growers now see a path to consistent profitability in urban farming. As an industry, we need to focus on the expansion of this model throughout the country and certainly the discussion around scale has already commenced in Cleveland. Our cultural, social, mission-based operation has always been one of collaboration and this will be especially important as we stay the course to advance urban farming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMickin. Mr. Eilers, welcome and feel free to offer your testimony.
Thank you. So, I'm Josh Eilers and I'm the founder of Ranger Cattle and we specialize in the direct marketing of Waigo beef in Austin, Texas. I'm pretty passionate about this topic specifically because it's the only real job I've ever had. I went from the military as an Army Ranger and transitioned right to college. And when I started at the University of Texas, I invested in cattle, mostly by accident. I didn't know any better. And then the more I learned, the more business class I took at UT, then I got the idea that, hey, it doesn't take a whole lot to realize if you cut out the middleman, if you direct-market that product, all of a sudden that carcass is worth a whole lot more and your margins increase drastically. So, Ranger Cattle started in traditional approach. We were a cow-calf operation and each year we would sell our calves off to a feed packer and, or a feed lot in Nebraska and he would ship it off to a packer and then those steaks would end up here in DC or in New York or Boston at some fancy steakhouse. Well, in Texas, we have a lot of pride, pride for our products, pride for our people. So, I get the idea that while I'm in college and I don't have real bills, what if we retain these carcasses and we knew we were supplying a great product in the first place, so why not feed the great people of our Austin community, the great people of Texas? And with that said, direct-marketing beef is no easy task. If you were to rank the challenges I've had in my life from, you know, Army Ranger, four combat deployments, you know, wounded in Afghanistan, I would probably be about right here, but direct-marketing beef might put you honestly, a whole different level. So, first I want to go over those challenges, just to make sure we get those across because I think colleagues here, they hit the opportunity. You know, the opportunity is there, it's just the challenges are pretty high and they're extensive. The largest one of those has been with the farmers' markets. I know the USDA has policies that stimulate growth of farmers' markets and the opening of new ones, but we need to be opening new, good ones. And what I mean by that are ones that do not exclude vendors. For example, I raise beef cattle in Austin, Texas and I'm within city limits, but yet I can't sell my beef in city limits because the Austin farmers' markets are controlled by an organization and that organization only wants one beef vendor there. Well, that beef vendor is from West Texas, he's shipping in, but it excludes me from that market altogether. And I don't think that, I know the American populace doesn't understand that and I'm not sure that the USDA does either. So, we need good farmers' markets and not just farmers' markets. And then additionally from the USDA, we do need more facilities that are inspected by them. I have to go over 100 miles to harvest one of our carcasses and, because those chefs at the restaurants that we supply right there in Austin, they want to see that USDA stamp of approval. The opportunities, like colleagues mentioned, you know, it's there. A couple of things we do to kind of set us apart is we are in that niche market with the Waigo beef. You know, we can guarantee prime and the people of Austin, they're fancy people and they like to eat fancy meat and that's good for us. And additionally, we use a label that we're pretty happy about. It's called Homegrown by Heroes and what that is, is it's a label that if your operation is run by veterans, then here's a label you can put on your product because I think it's agreed upon that any red-blooded American, when they're presented with two products of equal value, would prefer to buy from a veteran and to further support his transition from the military. And they say Texas, we have Go Texan labels and those are great, but they're expensive and you have to pay to put them on your product. But everyone knows about them. Not too many people know about the Homegrown by Labels. So, if we could spread that word or you could spread that word with your colleagues, I sure would appreciate that one on a personal level. Like Mr. McCloskey said, that their ranch is open to visitors. We think that's important, you know, education. I probably spend most of my time educating people that are either at the farmers' markets or even the chefs that aren't really familiar with our product, just telling them about it instead of ranching being a seven-day job for me. Now, it's about a three or four day and I'm a salesman the rest of the days. But that's okay because I think our operation at Ranger Cattle, although it's small for the time being, I think it's a net positive, a large, a greater good for our community and the best, the most positive direction we could send our operation in would be for the direct marketing of beef to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eilers. Thank you for your service and also for your entertaining testimony. I appreciate all of the witnesses being here today. We're now going to move into the question and answer session, part of our hearing. And since I'm gonna be here the entire hearing, I always defer my questions till later in the hearing, so others may be able to get to another event they may have to go to. So, I'm gonna recognize my colleague from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for his round of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it and I appreciate all the testimony. You guys had some great testimony. I didn't realize you were a veterinarian there, Doc. I've done a lot of the same things you have. We worked on a lot of dairy cattle and yeah, I got that, too. Pulled a lot of calves, C-sections and displaced Abomasums and all that good stuff. And I know the plight you're going through and I loved your testimony. In fact, you don't need to farm, we need you up here. We need you running in Congress to help us fix this, some of this stuff. And all you guys, everybody, ma'am, you too, everybody had a great testimony. Dr. McCloskey, you were talking about what you do with the digester and the nitrogen, resalvaging it, I guess. Did you do that because of government regulation or was it a need that you saw that you needed to fulfill to solve a problem?
You know, I, we do it because we truly like to try to get ahead of regulation.
Right.
I think as an industry, as all farmers, we should have that approach where we look for ways to solve regulatory problems by getting ahead of them, creating a market value to what we're doing. So, within what we're doing with the recovering of the nitrogen, phosphorus, ammonia as well, creating ammonium sulfate. Our concept, and this is really, I feel really innovative and interesting and we'll be pushing this agenda hard, but our concept is a watershed, everyone in a watershed should participate in this problem. We have a very serious problem with deforestation in this country and around the world, which are our dead zones and agriculture is a part of that. I mean, we can't deny that. But so is golf courses, septic tanks and small industry and many others. Our belief is that within a watershed, we need to get out of point sources versus non-point sources and allowing everyone to participate in a market-driven value by, which will allow us all to become innovative with technology like we have at Fair Oaks Farms. And there should be a recognition of that, a monetary recognition, because now we can extract, it takes a farm with the technology we have, $5 a pound to extract nitrogen. If you go to a waste treatment municipality plant today and try to extract one pound of nitrogen, it will take you $50. It's always better to work at the source. The system is not incentivized to be able to get golf course people to think different, lawn people, design new septic tanks that don't have the leakages that they do. Why? Just like we do with windows and we do with refrigerators where there is an incentive to be able to invest in that, there should be an incentivized system within a watershed to create a business case that creates innovation, allows all of us then to participate and find solutions. That's how innovation goes.
I'm gonna cut you off there and I think those are great suggestions that we'll look at. We've got a digester down in my area that is just, it's phenomenal. I think they produce over a megawatt and they run their whole dairy off and they sell back. Mr. Tonamaker, you brought up something, which I find, I was glad to hear you say that. You know, we need to get back to the basics about food safety. You know, whose responsibility is it? I know the, we, as government, have certain regulations that people should meet, but I think over regulations, as you said, like with the Food Modernization Act or the Food Safety Act, you know, that burdensome mandate that came out, you know, I've got farmers in my area that grow tobacco, corn, cotton, watermelons, blueberries, and they say that cost them $40,000 extra a year just in regulations, but it really didn't add to the food safety. And, you know, what you're saying is I think we need to go back to education and tell people, you know, I find it hard to believe that we've advanced this far, but people don't know to wash their vegetables. Or, you know, a chicken egg, you know, it comes out of the cloacal of a chicken, you gotta wash it. You know, there's certain basic things that we need to teach that goes back to kindergarten, you know? Stop, look and listen before you cross the road. And we need to go back and educate the public. And Mr. Heck, it sounds like you're doing that. You know, people are, you said that young man was grazing on the vegetables. I've done that. You know, you might pick up a nematode here and there, but you know, we can deworm you for that. That's just part of living. But, Mr. Tonamaker, going back to you, what regulations do you see that are probably the most burdensome that you run across that you would like to see us just stop or maybe check before we put them out with the industry like you?
Well, the industry has kind of gotten away from, and allowing paperwork to take everyone's blame away. And the orchard is a natural environment. We have a lot of, in the past, people allowed birds and other predators to take care of some of the insect population and like kestrels and owls that would take care of a lot of the voles and mice running around the orchard. And right now, they don't want anything living in your orchard or in the boundaries or the windbreaks or anything around it. So, it's, they want it to be a bird-free zone and, you know, we talked about not being able to take care of our hospitals, which is a very confined area and keeping disease and things out of the hospital. How can you keep that out of an orchard? Like you said, you need to be able to wash stuff down the chain.
I'm out of time and I gotta cut back, but you're right. I mean, when the inspectors come out, have you seen any birds fly over your watermelon pasture? No, I haven't seen any. I'm gonna yield back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen's time has expired and thank you for the educational opportunity here, Mr. Yoho. Appreciate that. Nematodes, right? Nematodes. I recognize the ranking member, Ms. Delbene, for her questions. Please make them good.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks again to all of you for being here today. I was interested to read in Mr. Tonamaker's testimony, he said direct-marketing drives every planting decision on the farm. And I know that you started at farmers' markets and as a result started meeting chefs, got into restaurant sales and CSA, expanded the number of farmers' markets significantly and then rebalanced your sales strategy and cut back on the number of farmers' markets and then got into value-added products. And so, I wanted, wondered, starting with you, Mr. Tonamaker, if you can discuss a little bit about how your marketing strategies changed from the early eighties when you were first starting in this area and through your transition to organic to where you are today and how that process has evolved?
Well, like we said in the testimony, that the indirect wholesale system kind of failed us in the fact that there was no real incentive for the wholesale distribution to provide good returns to the farmer. The farmer, as is right now, retains ownership of the fruit all the way to the grocery store when the person buys it. Yet, we all, and we have all, the wholesalers get all the money out first. So, essentially, we send the fruit to the warehouse and then they take all the money that's selling and the distribution, all those guys get their money out. Whatever's left over, the farmer gets. So, we changed to go in direct-market to the restaurants so that we could keep that, like to say, to keep the part of the carcass back on the farm. We started the farmers' markets and we able to meet the chefs and started developing our outreach and realized that these guys wanted specific things they couldn't get on a regular basis and then we expanded. Right now, we grow about 300 varieties of peppers. We have 16 varieties of sweet cherries. We're adding a few more so we could extend our growing season. And that way, we harvest cherries for about a month and a half. We grow about 48 kinds of peaches. We start picking in early July and pick all the way into late September, just to make it, so we could direct-market a longer period of time and keep our farm going. We transitioned to organic, started in 1997. We were fully organic in 2003 in our farm in eastern Washington and we're hoping to certify organic in our farm in Woodenville this spring with the idea that it was a good niche for us. Not that, my grandmother lived to be 100 years old when we were a conventional farm and she died in 2003. So, we really have, there's nothing, we don't, like they said, we don't want to combat either times farming methods. There's definitely pros and cons reached, but with us and our direct-marketing, a lot of the chefs were looking for it and asking for it and it's just worked out well in our situation with direct contact with the consumer to be able to certify organic. And that's helped us in our wholesale sales with selling to Treetop, which is a major juice producer in Washington. They're a co-op and routinely, we get returns with juice quality or peeler apples, which essentially cut up for apple pie fillings and things, of a higher return than we would for fresh market fruit. So, being organic has really helped us in that aspect in addition to direct contact with consumers. As far as the farmers' markets, we started, at one point, we were doing 18 a week. Now, we're, last summer did eight and this summer we'll probably be down at six or seven. Just the success of the farmers' markets we go to and being able to specialize and really emphasize on those has helped a lot. We do a lot of weekly share boxes, actually a pretty small amount considering some of our local competitor, you know, people that do hundreds, we do about 150. But we do a lot of restaurant sales and we have the farm in Woodenville, which we have a lot of direct sales going there to the people. We're able to do some agritourism and some educational plantings coming up here. That's in the, what we're striving for is to connect the community locally with their agricultural source.
Have others had similar experiences in terms of how things have evolved and they've transitioned from where they started in terms of direct-marketing to where you are today?
Go ahead.
Well, we are, we started again in terms of, we have a very small, our pastured poultry business and for, and we've only been in business for three full years, so we're very short. short. But for us, the opportunity has been largely in restaurants and farm stores and institutions. And that, to us, again, we're in a part of the country where there is a lot of, a huge number of farmers' markets. I would echo some of the challenges that Mr. Eilers has mentioned in terms of farmers' markets and that, that does, it has presented challenges and opportunities. But for us, we've seen the, the real growth in farm stores and in institutions.
Thank you. My time's expired. I yield back. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Delbene. Now recognize the gentleman from the state of Washington also for his round of questions, Mr. Newhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the compliments on our Washington cherries. You just wanna make sure I bring you some again this year, don't you?
I was a little disappointed we didn't see any, you know, taste testing opportunities from the witnesses, but, you know, obviously, we'll work on that for the next time. Right, John? Thanks. I will not charge you that time.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, I wanna thank everybody for their testimony this morning. You, you guys are saying some things that I've been trying to say for a long time. You know, somebody mentioned that we're about 2% of the population, the farm community anymore in this country. And we have a huge job to do to communicate to the general public the importance of agriculture and the challenges that we face and some of the things that are making it difficult for our industry to continue to thrive. So I appreciate you guys and your stories. You know, the direct marketing and the, whether it be farmers' markets or other ways, as scary as this might be for some of us, you guys are truly the face of American agriculture to the, to the US public. And, and so your ability to interact with, with the public, to really connect with consumers is, is, I think, one of the most important things that, that as a result of the direct marketing, aside from the economic successes that you've been certainly expressing today. So, whether large or small, it's important, you know, having, did you say 500,000 people visit your farm every year? Is that what you said? That's an amazing thing. And, and I would, I would guess that your connections at farmers' markets are, are large as well, even on a regular basis. And I wanna personally welcome Mr. Tonamaker to, to Washington DC. That farm happens to be in my district, so I'm proud of our local farmers, absolutely. So I guess, one of the things, you know, we're looking for ways, part of the reason for this hearing is to explore ways that government can help, a novel concept, to actually help you do what you're doing. So you've mentioned some, several of you have mentioned some challenges, whether transitioning to the next generation and how do we get land into the hands of beginning farmers or some of the regulations that you're facing. Could you expand from your perspective, Mr. Tonamaker, a little bit about, you know, you mentioned that those binders in front of you, certainly food safety is at the top of a lot of people's ideas of priority, but how, how do we help you get through that and also continue to provide a safe product to consumers?
Well, I, I think that the, the binders are a huge problem because there are a lot of small farms out there that are trying to work with regulations that are more designed towards maybe the next step down the line in the processing, and that's where you see a lot of the problems, is in the larger institutions. The farmer is held responsible for the product that leaves the farm, and yet they have no control over what goes on down the distribution chain. So when you direct market it, it kinda circumvents a lot of that. And as Mr. Eilers mentioned, the, the opportunity to have good farmers' markets and support that, I know that when you were on the state legislature and you were in charge of the A Committee in Washington, you were pretty helpful and listened, good ear to the farmers' market, and we appreciate that and thank you for that support. And I just think that it would behoove with the education that people understand and can see, like I say, the face and they can greet people and talk to them. I think that's a real important in the future is that for people to understand that there are the growing practices and why people do what they do and necessarily not being certified organic, doesn't mean they're perfect or bad, and, and there's reasons why people farm differently, and they're important. And the, the distance that food travels is super important to how they eat and when they eat. We had a recent farmers' market on, just on Sunday, and the lady asked, well, we told her we're running out of apples. And she said, "Well, why are you running out of apples? It's only January." Yes, it's only January. We picked the apples in October. We're trying to provide you a fresh product. And so, it kind of defeats the purpose if we're providing a store-bought apple. So, I mean, if refrigerated, stored apple for a period of time. So those are definitely obstacles, as education's as the biggest factor we face in consumers understanding that milk doesn't come out of a carton.
Yep.
And apples don't come on a shelf.
Thank you. Ms. Coffin, you brought up some ideas of challenges and how do we, focusing on the, getting new farmers into the business, how do we make that transition? I can't remember, in, you said something about the amount of farmers that are retiring in the next few years and the land that will become available either for development or farming.
Right.
Do you have any ideas on how we can accomplish that?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and thanks for asking. Are, we did this research project, unfortunately, it was limited to New England, so it was just our experience there, but we found that a huge number of, number one, that our region has 30% of our farmers are over 65 years old, and that a large number of those farmers do not appear to have successors. And thinking about how that land will transition, that to us means the importance of things like, or those programs and strategies, like the Beginning Farmers and Ranchers Development Program, which is funding some land access projects for, like us, it is funding Land for Good to do succession planning with older farmers, to help them find and identify who that next generation is, particularly as we're moving towards a situation where there are less kids coming up through farms, so that you've got a lot more new farmers who are coming in from off the farm.
Good.
So continuing to fund programs like that, and particularly where in urban areas, where there's a lot of development pressure, having the ability to purchase conservation easements through the Agriculture and Conservation Easement Program has been really important. I think the next farm bill is going to be an opportunity to think more creatively on the beginning farmers and land access, and there is, through the National Sustainable Agriculture Coalition, a focus on developing some new ideas. There might actually be tax incentives that could be important to, to help with that kind of transition.
Good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And all of your testimony, thanks for focusing on this very important issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Newhouse, and now recognize Mr. McGovern for five minutes.
Thank you, and I thank you all for being here, and it's great to see a familiar face in Ms. Coffin. I appreciate anybody who comes here and highlights the importance of agriculture in New England, because there's some incredible things going on. And I appreciate the comments on some of the concerns about the burdens of some regulations and the issues of food safety, but, you know, we need, I mean, food safety is a big issue. And my experience has been, is that small and medium-sized farms get it. They always have gotten it when it comes to food safety, because if you sell products that are not safe and make, get someone sick, you're out of business. It's the bigger, you know, mega-industry-type farms that are, that are the problem on that. But I do, I do, I do farm tours every year. I mean, I did one this last summer, I did 13 farms in two days, and I'm just impressed at the innovation and, and all the incredible things that are happening. It's like an agricultural renaissance occurring, which is really exciting. And, and, and consumers want more locally grown food, and they, they, they want fresh produce and, and then unique products that are, that are made on farms. And I've been to farm stands and CSAs and talked directly with farmers. I've been impressed, as Ms. Coffin pointed out, with the colleges and universities like UMass Amherst that are, as well as a lot of K through 12 schools that are committed to buying local. It's an important part of our economy. And talk about variety and value-added products, I've had everything from corn ice cream to, you know, pickles to mocha milk to, I have one farm in my district that is making maple vodka, which I'll bring to the committee next week for everybody here to... But I, I've really been impressed with efforts to expand access to fresh, healthy produce amongst low-income populations, receiving SNAP and other federal food assistance programs like SNAP, EBT, the WIC Farmers Market Nutrition Program, and the seniors Farmer Market Nutrition Program. In fact, I, I think we ought to have a veterans Farmer Market Nutrition Program to better connect veterans and healthy foods at VA clinics. But do any of you participate in any of these programs? And what's your experience been like, and what improvements or enhancements would you suggest?
Well, we participate in the SNAP and the WIC and the senior WIC programs at the farmers' market, and we actually are approved to accept WIC checks at our farm stand in Royal City. And we've really enjoyed the program. It brings a lot of people, new customers, out to the farm and out to the farmers' markets because the, the health clinic spends a lot of time educating people on where they can get, and, and the money stays in the community, which is an important thing.
Right.
For thinking about the farm and the health of the farm and the longevity of the community. The SNAP, we did a program in 2013 where they had a South King County Access Program, and we were one of the members. In fact, I was one of, on the advisory board that had to deal with farmer comments and suggestions, and that there's a big technological gap between farmers, especially in really rural settings, where there may or may not be internet connection, cell phone connection, and to develop these technologies to make it easier, because EBT is transitioning to electronic, and they have cards, not EBT, but excuse me, the SNAP is, and the WIC are gonna be same without the EBT card. So there's new technologies out there, but it's just getting it to the farmers. So, thank you. I'm sure, Mr. Heck, you're...
I think that one thing that has, has been a problem with people redeeming those benefits is, is the ability to get to a place, just the transportation. Many times, a market is located in a place where it's not a lower-income neighborhood because it's, the financial opportunities aren't there. So I think that one of those problems is people just can't simply get to a place that, you know, they can buy fresh produce or, or fresh meats or anything. It's just hard for them to get there. So I think maybe transportation or some sort of public transportation initiative that would get people to those places, or a mobile.
Mobile, that's...
Mobile would be great, yeah. We actually have that opportunity now. We have the ability to, to move produce in the neighborhoods that are a little more impoverished or can't make it to those places, so we're excited about that.
Well, I, again, I appreciate everybody's comments here today, and, and again, I'm in awe of the work that you all do. I would last about a half a day on a farm if I had to do that for a living. But I just say, one, one, on a positive note, you know, I speak to a lot of high schools, and usually at the end, I always ask people, like, "What do you wanna, what do you wanna do?" You know, "How many wanna be in Congress?" Nobody, right? "How many wanna be lawyers?" And, and a number of people, on a regular basis, in a lot of schools I visit, raise their hand, they say they wanna go into farming. And so when I talk about this renaissance, it's not just people wanna buy local produce and, and, you know, buy meats that are raised locally, but there seems to be this growing kind of appreciation about what farms are about, and, and more and more people seem to wanna commit their lives to that. So I think that that hopefully is an encouraging signal here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. I appreciate the offer for maple vodka, too. Coming from corn country, I can tell you, I've never had anybody say, "Boy, we ought to make some ice cream out of corn." So, I'd like to try that one, too.
Come to Massachusetts.
My passport doesn't work for Massachusetts. Mr. McCloskey, thank you again for being here. I'm gonna take my time to ask a couple of questions. I, again, appreciate your products. My family is a, a big fan. I know that you and I had a chance to talk about some of your other products that we see all throughout my area, not only in our grocery stores, but our convenience stores. But my colleague, I wish he would've stayed, just mentioned something about larger facilities, larger farms. Can you let us know, how big is your facility in Indiana?
So the Fair Oaks Farm is composed of 36,000 cows, 12 different farm operations within a four-mile radius.
So a very small operation.
Yes. It's, it's a, considered a large farm, but it's all family farms. So just, you know, we as owners, my wife works there, I work there, my kids work there, our other partners' families work there, but also many families work there that, that those generations stay with us. Those, the, the workers that have been with us for over 20 years, their children have grown up and have come back to the farm. And, and to, to, to the members' point on education, the advancements on farm today are so tremendous, and there's so much demand for, for great knowledge coming back into the farm, because the technology is improving at a level that is very attractive to young, to young, up-and-coming professionals to come back to the farm, from a nutritional standpoint of view, from biology, from chemistry, mechanical side of the business, because it, it continues to evolve technologically. So people tend to wanna, you know, cover us into corporate farming, but we're not corporate farming. They're really, in the United States, I don't know, maybe 1% or 2% of the farming could be really considered corporate farming. We're just large farmers. We were successful at what we did. I started with 200 cows, and sometimes you feel that you're punished for being successful and reinvesting in a business and growing it and making it more efficient. And I like to think of, of a concept that I'd share with all of you that is scale for good. What I shared about our digesters and the technology that we have been able to invest in, that's R and D money coming out of our dairy, that unfortunately, a small operation can't do. But as we develop that technology, two things happen with new technology. One is it becomes more efficient as you use it, and the other one is you drive cost out of it. Those two things combined make the technology more affordable for smaller and smaller farms. So you can, you know, you gotta, scale is good because it will help the innovation system to raise all boats in the farming community. So, you know, I keep on insisting that, that it's all of us together. There is no way we can get here. I, I respect organic, matter of fact, we have organic dairy farms besides the others. So I, I believe in organic farming, I believe in small, I believe in large, I believe that all of us together will create what I consider the true sustainability farming, because it will be the confluency of the things that you're learning on your farm, that I go by and talk to you, and, and I, wow, why don't I do that on conventional farming? Because I could save money and it will be more appealing. It's that confluency of that knowledge that has always made America great and will continue to allow us to be the leader in agriculture in the world. People come from all over the world to see who we are, and we have to have the mentality that we're all in this together and we're focused on a movement forward together to create true sustainable farming. That definition has not been clear yet to the consumer or to even us as farmers, because the most, one important thought process is, I as a farmer, and I hope everyone on this table, will listen to the consumer because we, we, we want to deliver to the consumer what they want. But the consumer also needs to understand that that may come at a cost. If they want something such as GMO-free products, to take GMO away from farming is taking a tremendous advantage that truly is sustainable to farming, that increases productivity, decreases water use, decreases chemical use, decreases pesticides and herbicides. It increases all those things and decreases productivity by taking that tool away. A very safe, scientific-proven tool that we've had over 3 trillion encounters in the last 25 years with GMOs without one single reported illness. We as a government, farmers, we have to be together with a message that's true and science-based and allow the consumer to decide they, it's a choice, and we need the variety, but it can't be a confused choice. It has to be a choice that is dealing with the sincerity and the reality and the true science, so that the consumer knows, if I wanna pay, if I want this, I, it costs more, but not only does it cost more, it has an environmental cost. So it's funny, what I find in my experience is, I find people that have a dichotomy going in their heads, right? They believe that they're doing the right thing for the environment and that they're sustainable, and then they want GMO-free, or, or they want something that is, that takes away a very safe tool that causes, has a cost to the environment, and they don't understand that. They just have been told through, however they're getting their information, that this is better. But better in what sense? So we have to have an informed consumer together. We, we can't be fighting against each other and creating things that aren't true out there.
And thank you.
To make each other less of what we're trying to accomplish.
I appreciate those comments. I, I'm out of time, and I had just one quick question. Will you raise your hand if you want your operations to be expanded or grow within the next five years?
Thank you.
You wanna get bigger. You wanna get bigger. So thank you very much. I now yield to the gentle lady from Florida, Ms. Graham, for her questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say this has been one of the more entertaining and enjoyable hearings that I participated in, so I wanna thank all of the, all of the... participated in, so I want to thank all of the witnesses. I just completed, this is very timely, because I just completed my first official North Florida farm tour. I have 14 counties in my district. It's the largest geographical district in Florida and the most rural, and a whole lot of agriculture. So, this is a wonderful opportunity to follow up on that. Mr. Ehlers, I specifically would like to ask you a question. We have a lot of veterans in our district, a lot, who are coming back from active duty and looking for ways to continue to contribute, and there's a lot of interest in farming. And I was looking, I was actually looking at your webpage, and I've liked your Facebook page already. And I was curious, in addition to the Homegrown Heroes, what other marketing options and opportunities are there for veterans that I could let the veterans back in my district know about?
You know, to tell you the truth, I don't know myself. You know, the Homegrown by Heroes, the reason it's so exciting and so big is because it's the first one that really gives us an opportunity to set ourselves apart. So to answer your question, I don't know of other ones you could share with them. I would definitely encourage transition into agriculture. I think it's a beautiful thing, especially if you're like, I was going straight from combat and back to, you know, trying to make that successful transition. I don't think there's any better way to do it than through agriculture.
Does anyone else, any of the other witnesses, know of specific direct marketing opportunities for veterans? Well, we need to work on that. There needs to be more, you know, in my district, we found that there's really an interest, and I have Florida A&amp;M University, and we're working on a program that will help train veterans in farming. There's a lot involved, and as y'all pointed out, the age of the average farmer is in the 60s, and there's not, unfortunately, the family continuation of the businesses that we've seen. So whatever we can do to encourage the next generation of farmers. Well, thank you, and thank you for your service. I took a look at, it's quite impressive what you've done in your life. So thank you for all you're doing. So I'll turn to Mr., I want to make sure I pronounce your last name correctly, Tonamaker. The point of my North Florida farm tour was to meet with the farmers across the district and learn the challenges and opportunities that they were facing, particularly in the vulnerable populations. Seniors and veterans are included in that. Children and low-income populations. Can you provide any guidance on what would be some additional marketing opportunities for the more vulnerable populations that might like to go into farming or are in farming already?
Well, thank you. I think that one of the really important things that we've kind of touched on today is the difficulty of a person entering the market now with the cost of the land and the cost of the equipment. A lot of people can run their business and can farm. There is the need for education with the regulation and making sure that you comply with all the regulations. But the main, one of the main deals is getting help for people to understand that there are programs out there, maybe that can help them meet retiring farmers and find land, and also to find ways to make, so they can develop their product and, like, driving 100 miles to get your beef slaughtered is a long ways. And maybe help with education on how to run the facilities to reuse your byproducts or leftover from the dairy business. I think that kind of education, because it's intimidating, the laws out there as far as where you can farm and how you can farm. And education is very, very important, and I wish I could be more specific. But those, I just think that focusing on education.
Education is key. Do any of y'all have StrikeForce in your areas? The USDA program StrikeForce? No? Not familiar with that? Okay. Something I was surprised, Mr. Chairman, can I have a, are you the acting chairman now, Mr. Yoho? My fellow Floridian colleague.
Yes, ma'am. I have another 30 seconds.
StrikeForce is something I was surprised has not, was not in Florida. I think some of the districts, some of the counties are in your district. So I'm going to work with the USDA to help the counties in North Florida utilize the StrikeForce program. Might be something you want to look into. Might provide some options as well in your areas of the world. Well, thank you. I have no more time, so I yield back the time I do not have. Thank you very much.
We thank you for yielding back that non-time. And the chair will now recognize our colleague from the state of New Hampshire, Ms. Custer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I did get a chance to thank Mr. Davis for holding this hearing. Welcome to all of you, and in particular, to Chris Coffin. Welcome for your work that you're doing in New Hampshire. I'm very excited about agriculture growing. We're one of the very few states with the rising 5% increase year-over-year now with new farmers, young farmers, value-added farm-to-table, farmer's markets. I could go on and on. I'm excited to announce that we're number two in the United States for the percentage of farms were direct sales at 31%. I was wondering if it was a neighboring state that was number one. It turns out it was Hawaii, so. But we're hot on their heels. And I've done a number of events in addition to visiting farms, but I want, a couple of shout-outs. One, the USDA Rural Development Program that you're probably all familiar with has been super helpful. We just did a renewable energy with installation of solar panels at a farm that does a lot of direct marketing. And I think you're absolutely right in terms of access to land. That's actually how I first got into this before I came into Congress, was helping to save a local farm, Diamond Hill Farm, and doing the land conservation. It was a classic case, third generation, the brother wanted to sell it off to build McMansions, and the sister wanted to keep it. And we brought together everybody, federal farmer-rancher program, state funding, local, the town. And at the end, I helped to raise the money from just the community. And it's been a brilliant success. The best corn in the state of New Hampshire, everybody stops there to get fresh fruits and vegetables, and I'm just a huge fan. My question, and this is directed, Chris, to you, from what you've been seeing on the ground, working with New England farmers, what are some specific examples of how farmers are better utilizing direct sales to reach newcomers, customers, and boost farm income? And then, how can farmers outside of New England use some of these successful techniques to grow their direct sales?
Right. Well, thank you for the question. Around New England, it's just impressive at the diversity of, as Congressman McGovern mentioned, in terms of opportunities. And in New Hampshire, you know, one of the wonderful things is the new state has done a public-private partnership with restaurants to have a certified local restaurant certification program so that customers know that they can go to certain restaurants and know that there's going to be local food on the menu. So that sort of, that helps in some ways. I would say on the institutional markets, that what's been impressive in New England, and I think this would hold true for around the country, is that schools and universities and healthcare centers that have made an effort at buying local and have worked to do consumer education about that local, that the result has been that more kids in public schools buy school lunches because there's this, you know, the sort of combination of education and education and working with school food service directors to do more scratch cooking. It makes, in many cases, food is better. That's not to say, Mr. McCloskey, that food from far away is not fine, but that there has been a sort of interest in moving away from prepared school food, and that helps generate excitement, and kids eating the food all helps to increase. And so schools that are doing well with their school lunch programs and breakfast programs is because it's, there's a new excitement, and that helps to make it more cost-effective for schools. And the same thing with universities. UMass has had a significant increase in the number of students who have gone on the school meal plan. They're now number one in the country because they have made a big effort to promote local and sustainable, and it's gotten students excited. So I would say that in terms of those opportunities, I think those are everywhere.
Yeah, and I see that connection myself. The food tastes better and people are excited about it, and making that connection to health, this generation particularly in terms of their level of activity and concern around health. And then, I, my time is up, but I just want to add, the state of New Hampshire has done a lot of marketing, and I think Washington State probably in this regard as well. We have a nice tourism brochure now about farmer's markets and direct marketing and, you know, so I think in a state like ours where tourism is the number two in sector of the economy, to be able to encourage people, and it spills over to the vodka and the home brew, you know, the brewed beer, we doubled overnight in terms of the availability and real interest and excitement around that. And I think, as you say, the money stays local. So, thank you all, I appreciate your help, and thank you again for hosting us.
Thank you, Annie. It always goes back for the Northeasterners to the vodka and the homebrew beer.
And the maple syrup.
And the maple syrup, yes.
It's all about the maple syrup.
You know, I'm going to jump in here. Mr. Heck, thank you again for coming out from central Illinois. Following up on some of the questions Ms. Custer asked and Ms. Coffin's comments on school nutrition. You know, I know that you, being a past teacher, you're working with many school districts in my district, both larger, more urban school districts, and now trying to reach out to the rural areas. We have a different issue that we face in Illinois than those in smaller geographical states face in a lot of our eastern, part of the northeastern part of our country. We were talking today earlier about how do we impact more of my rural school districts? You taught in a rural school district that's really only about 20 minutes from a larger urban area. I represent areas in southwestern Illinois that are connected to the rest of the state by one bridge or two ferries. And their rural school district is the area of Illinois where we can actually grow more specialty crops. But there's that lack of ability to get those crops into the school system to begin to educate the children and the parents on what you're doing in some of the larger districts. So, what is your suggestion on how we attack that problem within our school nutrition programs? Because those superintendents are the ones that come to me and tell me they have a problem meeting the standards. They have a problem losing students. We're not gaining students into the school nutrition program in Illinois. We're losing them. We're having schools drop out. Tell me what your thoughts are on how to fix that.
Okay, well, thank you. Ironically, you know, rural children today are almost as detached from food as some urban children. There's just, there's fewer smaller family farms, I suppose. But one of the biggest problems, I think, with, is, well, one is, in fact, getting the food to the school in a safe way. And second, most schools aren't even equipped anymore to hold food that's fresh. We no longer have ovens in schools in many places. We no longer have stoves. We just have a warmer that you push a button, and you warm up processed food. So I think one of the biggest challenges is, I mean, we can get fresh food to the school, but how do we cook it now? So I think that we need to, you know, supply schools and get equipment, cooking equipment back in schools. I've been to school cafeterias where there are no knives. People don't even chop up anything anymore. So, I mean, it's a challenge. So I think basic cooking equipment is one of those solutions in.
Is that what you're, is that what you're doing in Buffalo, Tri-City?
Yeah, we, yeah, our chef at Gen H works very closely with the staff of the kitchen at Tri-City, and we are doing scratch.
Did you have to put cooking materials back in?
Yes. When I was in elementary school at Tri-City, we had cafeteria staff that were very adept at cooking. They were skilled cooks. And we even took turns in the cafeteria, and we learned how to cook, which was something I don't see anymore. We actually went to the cafeteria and helped the school cooks cook food. So, yes, but now we do. We have purchased equipment. The school now has ovens, they have stoves, they have knives, they have cutting boards. So, yeah, we work closely with that school. We went, I visited the school the other day, and we walked in the school lunchroom, and it smelled amazing. They were cooking whole chickens and, you know, preparing, I believe it was chicken and noodles. So it's not something you smell in a school cafeteria often, like the great smell of chicken noodle soup. So, the chef commented, too, she was ready to eat, so we even shared a meal there.
You're making us hungry.
I know.
Like the record show, I have smelled some bad chicken noodle soup before, too. They don't give us knives here either, Mr. Heck. Or stoves. So maybe we have the same problem here. I appreciate your time. I may get back to you with a few more questions, but I'm going to defer to my colleague, Mr. Yoho, for a second round of questions, and hopefully they're as entertaining as the first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate it, Mr. Heck, what you're talking about is, we need a paradigm shift is what I see, and get back to some of the basics. And I think that's true in a lot of things. I know it's true in farming, you know, go back to the basics on so many things that we need to do. We're talking about direct marketing, and I think one of my biggest questions to all of you is what you've run into. You know, we've got large farms, we've got small farms, and then you've got specialized beef, you know, with the wagyu. When you go to direct marketing, what is one of your biggest obstacles? Are you running into the box stores, the centralization? Like, in our area, we've got these mega grocery stores that if I got to sell to that store, I've got to go through a certain route. If I'm a smaller farmer, I can't even qualify. What do you run into on that? We'll start with you, Mr. Ehlers.
So as far as trying to get into one of those large grocery stores like that is, I just don't have the animals to be able to back up that order if they were to come to me. And then, you know, you always got to talk about the price point. It costs me more because I'm under 100 head of cows.
Right.
So it costs me more to produce them, and so I have to find that specialty chef who really appreciates it, who really appreciates the local. And the big warehouse stores, I don't think they do.
All right, so the goal is to start small with a couple restaurants to feature your beef and brand it, and then grow from there. And that's, you know, I can't think that's the American way of the entrepreneurial spirit. But you were saying that you're marketing at, trying to market at, I think it was Austin Farmer's Market. Is that a government-subsidized one, or where they accept EBTs or sanctioned by the USDA?
You know.
Or is it a private farmer's market?
I have the feeling it's private, but when I went and talked to them, and I told them I was coming to do this, they wouldn't return my calls, so I wasn't.
I get that often.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
It's not the same reason.
Yeah, so.
Your time's expired. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So, to tell you the truth, I don't know.
Okay. If you would check into that, let us know, because if it's a USDA-sponsored one, the way I understand it is, I don't think they can exclude you. The other thing you're running into, you said the nearest slaughter facility is 100 miles away?
No, the nearest USDA inspector.
Oh, inspector.
Yes.
All right. Do you have one closer to you where you can hire the inspector to come in? Because we have some customized facilities around us where they hire the inspector and...
Correct, they can, but they're, to speak on your regulation issues, for example, one of the regulations, the USDA inspector has to have his own restroom facility just for him. And so the processing plants aren't willing to take that additional burden to be able to have that inspector on staff there.
Okay. And then, Dr. McCloskey, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate you bringing up the GMO issue. We hear that a lot. There's a lot of just misinformation out there, you know, and it's something that we need to do a better job. Sounds like you're doing a great job on your farm to get that out there because, you know, we're going to 9 billion people in this world, and we can't feed them without GMOs. And we need to, like you said, the research has been there. Nobody can come up with a definitive disease, anything that's come from a GMO, and I agree with you. And we're going to, we all need to do that in the farming community. If somebody does want to have a GMO, that's up to them, but like you said, it's going to drive the cost up. And then, one of the other things was the organic, well, I lost my train of thought here, so I'm going to defer back to the chairman here. It's all those years on the south end of the northbound cow.
And you wonder why we don't get knives? Do you need to put some gloves on to get you back thinking again? Sorry, inside-ag joke. Mr. McCloskey gets it. I'll defer to Mr. Newhouse for his questions. Can, do you need five minutes, or are you only going to take three like him?
I'll use his extra two minutes.
Okay.
That kind of confirms why they don't give us knives, I think, probably. I just, again, thank you very much for your testimony, and, you know, I've been working for a long time trying to bridge that gap between urban and rural and reconnect. time trying to bridge that gap between urban and rural and reconnect people with agriculture. So, all of your efforts to do that is particularly interesting to me. And I just wanted to go back to a little bit to what, is it Dr. McCloskey? You talked essentially that we can no longer afford to have this conflict between ourselves and the agricultural industry, you know, one side can't be vilifying the other. And I totally agree with you. And I've seen that happen, and it doesn't help anybody, really. So, maybe expand on a little bit. How are we doing there in your estimation? Are we making progress? And what are some things that maybe the industry could do to help all of us speak more cooperatively, not necessarily, you know, not always going to agree on things, but certainly, how can we, as an industry, work better together?
Right. I think that unfortunately, we're not doing better on that. The consumer, I think, is more confused than ever, as social media and the areas where a consumer today gets their information and who they trust and who they don't trust, is, we have to rebuild trust. So, farmers are still very trusted within the consumer's eyes. And I think if, when us farmers are talking against each other is really where we're finally putting the nail in the coffin of being able to get there. So, to me, it's, again, it just goes back to the basic principles of the core values that farmers have. If you go down this table, we all have those same core values. We care about safety, we care about quality, we care about the environment. You know, we want to make sure that we produce what the consumer wants. And there's, and there's place for everyone. We just have to, you know, come together as a agriculture community and agree on those principles that, you know, we're not against each other, because we're, all boats will rise. We just have to speak with the true science of what's out there, because that is very important for the environment. We, we need to be able to embrace technology. We can't be anti-technology. What we need to make sure is that technology is safe, that it's proven, that we understand it, and that we can communicate it to the consumer without the confusion that we're trying to do. And unfortunately, a lot of this comes down to competitive marketing. And I think that's socially irresponsible. I think we, for, when we as farmers grab onto that, because we're ignoring the damage that that's causing at the confusion level. So, to, just to answer your question, unfortunately, we're not doing what we're doing. I'm, you know, a big advocate for all type of farming, and I hope that that message continues to get out there and that we can, this confluency of knowledge, the ladybugs, what's happening in the trees, I mean, there's so much I can learn from other farmers, the small poultry operation. How do we take that stuff into larger scale and make what we're doing better? And how can we create technologies in larger scales and make what other people are doing better? I mean, we all are in the same boat, and we all need to rise together. So, I would appreciate, you know, I thank you for, you know, listening to what I said and considering it important, because it is what Fair Oaks Farms is about. I open the doors to all that public. It's a lot of people going through your farms every day, and our message is exactly that, is that, you know, we want farmers to see everything we do. We want them to understand that it's going to take every farmer in this country and around the world to be able to have that safe, affordable food while taking care of the environment and being able to feed the 9 billion people that we're going to have to deal with in, you know, 2050. Thank you.
That's great. I appreciate you just, just being here this morning, helping to get that message out, I think goes a long way. So, appreciate you saying that. And again, everybody's testimony today. Thank you very much. I'll give you back 35 seconds, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Newhouse. I appreciate the opportunity to see you once again today. And I know everybody is busy. I've got some more hearings I've got to go attend myself. But before we end the hearing, is there anything that one of you wants to maybe comment on that we haven't asked you about? I'd like to limit the comments to less, not five minutes, but to a minute and a half, two minutes, if you have anything that you thought you might be able to bring up here that us on the committee didn't get a chance to ask you. Mr. Tonamaker?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. First of all, I want to applaud Fair Oaks Farms with their being able to put nutrients back into the soil, and they're working on ways to be sustainable. So, they, the big message that he was bringing across, and a lot of us are trying to say is, small farms, and I consider their farm a small farm from the standpoint of the mentality they're running their farm, they're trying to be sustainable. They want to have future generations work through it. They're not just to turn it and burn it and move on to the next piece of property. And I think that's something that we don't, as a society, put a price on resources and the lack thereof, or they're not, they need to be sustainable. They need to be putting nutrients back in the soil when they're using them. They just can't devoid the land of nutrients, put a bunch of fertilizer in there that's going to acidify the soil, and then, so the future generation can't farm there. They've got to think smart, think sustainable. And I think that's something the government can maybe do, is with their education, is labeling sustainability and how the farmer and the dairyman and the cattlemen are farming. Is it sustainable? And then they can, you know, use that as maybe some sort of tax benefit or whatever to move the education that this farm is sustainable and this farming practice is sustainable, and maybe lose some of the labels like he's talking about. And if we all move forward, and I think sustainable is the, is the way of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Heck?
Sure. I just wanted to maybe direct my next comment towards my previous experience with farming. And we've talked a lot about scaling up. I actually scaled down the last two years, and I feel that that is also an effective way to farm. We grew on less than two acres, really less than an acre, and produced a substantial amount of food. So, through using organic compost and just really building our soils, we produced a significant amount of food. Went to 52 farmers' markets throughout the year and had a substantial product to show with just under an acre. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Sure. Two comments. One, I have to say, I never thought that I would find something in common, farming in Massachusetts and Texas. But we too have to travel-
Neither did we.
We, we too find ourselves shipping our birds more than 100 miles to a USDA inspected plant. So, this is, it's a problem not just in Texas, but around the country. And we are, our second problem related to that is that we were certified, as my husband is a Vietnam vet, and we're also, are able now to use the homegrown by Heroes label. But there was a challenge with the slaughterhouse that we were using, trying to figure out how to do that, and just that sort of education and being able to work with the USDA inspector to be able to have the label that allowed that to happen, because it was a different-sized label. So, that got very complicated. And I guess my only other point, sort of in closing and thinking for the committee and for all of us, is that I think around the country that direct marketing is just so important in terms of market diversification. And when you look at the numbers of direct sales from direct markets, still being pretty small for agriculture around the country, but it's a very important risk management strategy, at least in our neck of the woods, for people who are still wanting to and able to market wholesale. But having that extra opportunity, back to what Mr. Tonamaker said about the profit margin. So, it's very important to think of it as, as part of that broader risk management strategy for agriculture.
Okay. Thank you very much. No comment from Texas to Massachusetts? Mr. McCloskey?
Yeah, I want to, I'd like to express a little more on what Mrs. Coffin just addressed on direct marketing. We had the opportunity at one time, when we started with many of our products, one of them, the Fair Life Core Power products, that they were basically made in very small batches. And we went ourselves as farmers to different venues, be it farmer markets, but more importantly, these were high-protein products. So, we were at every race we could be at and every spot we could be at. And, and that was a true direct marketing, and we shared the values that we've talked about today here with the consumer and the taste and the quality of the product and all these great things. And, and it, that's how products really are going to get developed in the future, in my opinion. And, but that doesn't mean that, that you can't continue direct marketing as you get bigger. If you look at our Fair Life bottle today, which is distributed nationwide, but it started on what I just described, it has my wife's signature and my signature with a promise of those same values that everyone here is delivering. And we're delivering that on a nationwide basis. There's great technology that allows us, through HPP, high-pressure pasteurizations and ultra-pasteurizations, and incredible new innovative packaging that allows us to create local products that can become and travel the entire country, get there in less than 48 hours, and be as fresh as it could be local. And you can deliver still those values and never losing those core values and the promise that all of us like to give to those consumers. So, it doesn't stop at the small. These core values can be on a nationwide basis.
What you've also done is reduced the cost to the consumers with your production of the Fair Life milk, where folks who normally would have bought a single serve in disposable packaging are now able to get multiple servings of a higher-protein, ultra-filtered milk, that they're able to consume the protein that they demand in a much more sustainable way and also a more cost-effective way. So, thank you. You cost my family less because my kids drink too much. So, anyone else? All right. Thank you, everyone, again, for your time. We'll dispose of closing comments, other than I do appreciate each and every one of you coming out to this institution to offer your testimony. Your testimony will be utilized by many in this committee room and the staff that so, you know, so efficiently put these hearings together to help us move forward good ag policy into the future. I know the next farm bill was mentioned by some of you numerous times. I hope we get to another farm bill and get another farm bill across the floor. The last one was pretty tough. But we need testimony like this to be able to develop good programs, and also to be able to change the existing programs that we currently operate under and those existing policies that we currently operate under to make them better for producers like you. So, thank you for your time today. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days. To receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. The Subcommittee on Biotechnology, Horticulture, and Research hearing is now adjourned.
Yeah, I'm going to set up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.